This regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024 in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. This meeting is being livestreamed, and interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/ISD535. Tonight's meeting is also being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel following completion of the meeting. If you are speaking or presenting at tonight's meeting, please speak directly into or close to the microphone provided so that the recording can capture clear audio and the audience present can hear what is being said. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org/simbly. Present at this meeting are school board members, Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Bylaw.
Here.
Director Clip.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
President Zaltman.
Here.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Mike Sherwood.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. A note to the Board and the community in the room, if we're still meeting around 7:00 o'clock, we'll assess whether we need to take a break at that time. Item 3, comments to the Board. It is important for the school board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. We welcome communication via email, phone call, and our community engagement listening sessions and here during comments to the Board. Persons who want to make comments to the Board must fill out the online request to provide comments to the Board form by 5:00 PM on the Monday before the school board meeting to sign up for a time slot. The form is available on the RPS website, rochesterschools.org, under School Board Communications, and on the Simbly main page at rochesterschools.org/simbly. The purpose of comments to the Board is to give community members an opportunity to provide input directly to the school board about issues that fall within our authority. The Board and Superintendent do not respond directly to the speaker's comments during the meeting, but may follow up with the speaker if requested and appropriate. A reminder that Policy 206 and Procedure 206A set the time, place, and manner procedures and restrictions on comments to the Board. These ensure privacy protections for students and staff and prohibit comments that are threatening, profane, lewd, vulgar, obscene, harassing, abusive, or constitute a personal attack on others. Speakers, when your name is called, please come to this table, choose a microphone to speak into and be seated. You will have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed on the screens right in front of me. Please begin your remarks by stating your name, and if you have any written materials for the Board, please provide them to Ms. Sam prior to your remarks, and she will distribute them to Board members. Our next agenda item is 4.1, Rochester Public School Foundation Grant Recipients. I'm going to call up Matt Logelin.
Hi, my name is Matt Logelin. I'm the current president of the Rochester Public School Foundation, and basically the purpose of me coming here tonight is to announce our fall and winter grant recipients. Just a quick background, and I know a lot of you, especially on the Board, have seen these slides several times, but the Rochester Public School Foundation is basically a nonprofit organization that helps raise money and give out grants to school, and that's the biggest reason we're here tonight. Obviously, our biggest thing is giving out grants, and since 1988, we've awarded $600,000 in grants to different organizations in the school district. Funds come from personal and business donations, staff member employee donations, grants from volunteers and other organizations like that. With that said, since the purpose is to get through the grants and have them talk you through it, I will just say that quickly, there are a lot of different funds that we pull from. Everything from a fine arts fund to a STEM fund to several organizations that were set up years ago and have funds that we draw from each year. This is just kind of a list of some of them. This year, for our fall/winter grant, we actually awarded five projects for a total of $9,836. We did have 10 applications, and after review, we found a few of them that trickled to the top as the projects basically are looking to try out new things in the district. Projects were selected by the grant committee, and those then we were voted on, and at this point, I'd like to walk through each of the five grants and have them come up and actually give a brief discussion of what they are. So our first recipient, I will call up Leah Badke.
Thanks to the Rochester Public School Foundation, our PTEC ninth graders will have the opportunity to attend a live virtual tour of Auschwitz-Birkenau upon the completion of our Holocaust unit that centers around the reading of Night by Eli Wiesel. Reading and learning about a place and the atrocities that happen there is one thing, but seeing it and listening to the history from an expert adds another layer of depth and understanding. Throughout the quarter, students will be reading the text, studying and researching about the Holocaust and its victims and survivors, and making connections between past and present. At the end of the unit, this virtual tour will provide a once-in-a-lifetime deeper learning experience that's meant to foster critical thinking about ideas and concepts explored throughout the quarter, including propaganda, genocide, and extremist ideologies while increasing and expanding empathy towards these and other marginalized groups. Students will have a chance to quote "visit" this place, and they have learned so much about under the guidance of an expert and have the opportunity to ask questions in real time. I'm excited to be able to give my students the opportunity to experience this virtual field trip because learning from the painful and uncomfortable parts of our collective history help ensure that we don't become doomed to repeat it.
Hi, Jason Cidya. Thank you. Next, I will call up John Medkraft from the Phoenix Academy.
Hello, my name is John Medkraft. I work at a Phoenix Academy. I'm here to present our grand award for dough. We'll be working on an entrepreneurship program at the Phoenix Academy with our special education students. Just a little known fact, there's 50% of small businesses, you know, make up most of our special education jobs in the future. A lot of us are starting their own businesses because it meets their needs. So, we decided at Phoenix Academy to work on those skills of team building, leadership, independence, and things like that. So, we're going to be doing a bakery. The kids have already started, as you can see, with their marketing plan, with their ideas. So we have marketing managers, business manager, logistics managers, things like that, so you can learn job skills and, like you guys all said, deeper learning. We're very excited about that new concept here in the district. Yeah, and eventually to a full-fledged bakery. So we were starting up, we bought equipment, and we're super stoked and excited. So hopefully coming to you soon.
With dough.
There you go. Thank you. Yep, dough. Yep.
Thank you, John. Love the shirt. Next, I will call up Julie and Kate. Are you going to come up as well from Gage?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
First in the morning. It's like an obstacle course.
So, we're here from Gage, and we're excited to start a project called Moving to Mastery. And it's a systematic way of helping students to learn through movement.
This is Katie Miller.
I, yeah. This is Julie.
I am Julie McLaren, and we know that brains go through a lot of growth in the primary years, and we have a program that is research-based that works for primary years, and then the kids still grow their brains after that, but there really isn't something yet that targets that brain growth and development and executive function. And so we know that brains go a little bit. They grow a lot in a lot of different ways when they are entering puberty, and we have those grade levels in our elementary school. And so these kits are designed by executive function experts and occupational therapists, and they give one- to two-minute tips and scripts that teachers can use to implement these activities. So they'll have these short movement breaks that help them target learning and grow their brains throughout the school day.
Thank you, Julie and Kate. Next, I'll call up Lisa Becker from Riverside.
Good evening. I'm the Community Schools facilitator at Riverside Central Elementary. Community schools in the district create projects and initiatives based on the needs of the community. So as an urban school situated in the heart of Rochester, it's very important that our students experience outdoor education. Students love the magic of playing amongst the trees and learning about outdoors and redefining a classroom. This grant supports environmental education from Project Get Outdoors for face-to-face lessons with kindergartners and fifth-grade students. So Riverside needs these hands-on learning experiences that make sense in our environment with our natural resources. So last week, kindergartners listened to the sounds by the river, which there's many more sounds than you think there would be. In March, fifth graders will make maple syrup from our trees, and we'll also plant a native garden and take a field trip to the state park. So that's why this grant is really important. It's supporting beautiful partnerships and opening their eyes to the natural world right in the heart of the city.
Thank you, Lisa. And last but not least, I'll call Josh Halderson with Community Ed.
Hello. So LGBTQ students face challenges that other students do, but a lot of them are amplified. So problems with mental health, a sense of belonging in school, and kind of an optimism for what they can do after graduation, they feel harder. And Rochester Public Schools Foundation is expanding a summer program. So, May 2024 will start another year of a summer event series for LGBTQ youth. Again, the goal is to put them with positive role models, be healthy, and kind of envision better possibilities for the future. Some of the events have been facilitated by community partners, so Family Service Rochester staff have come in and talked about access to mental health care. The Mayo Clinic Graduate School has hosted lab tours, interactions with their staff and students who identify as LGBT. UMR Rochester has done a college visit, again, with LGBTQ college students, kind of giving their stories academically and personally. And the foundation this year is allowing students to kind of choose events that they want to do. So some of the new events will be a screening of a movie at Pop's Art Theater, rock climbing, workshops with artists, all of which kind of will draw in community volunteers who are LGBTQ plus. And if you're interested in participating in some way, Rochester Pride is going to be on Saturday, May 18th, and that'll be a good day to just talk with students. They'll probably make you a craft and give you some feedback.
Thank you, all the recipients. It was glad, it was great reading through all of them, and unfortunately, we couldn't fund all 10, but just to give you an idea, one of the fundraisers we do, obviously, all the time here is, and you've probably seen it in your inbox, is the Honor an RPS Staff Member. And basically, you can see that even in this last chunk here, we received donations to recognize 24 different staff members, so those are greatly appreciated. We've been sending it out pretty much every month. We do our grant cycle twice a year. Basically, as soon as we finish this one and we celebrate, we're starting the next one. We're also looking for people who are willing to help read and score the grants. Pretty easy job. It takes a couple hours to read through them and then kind of give you a grant and rate it. If you're interested, please just look out at our site or talk to myself or anybody else. As always, we're grateful the district, working on all these different programs, and we're glad we can provide it. And I'd also put in a plug that right now, what we could really use is just more volunteers. We are, according to our bylaws, supposed to have about 12 board members, and I think we're at six right now. So it's a pretty minimal time commitment, other than our once-a-month meeting and then taking on activities and other things that are going on. So if anybody's interested, reach out, hit our Board. There's actually an application link out there as well. Any questions?
Director Clip.
I just have a quick comment, no, two. The application from Community Ed, that's the first time I've seen, and it's probably not the first time a Community Ed application has come through RPSF, but as I've been closely watching RPSF projects, that's the first one that I've seen, and I think it's great. Congrats on getting involved, and I hope it's not the last. Exciting projects all around. I did just want to underscore for you, Matt, the appeal for volunteers, you took the words out of my mouth, but I'll underscore it anyway. For those that have recently become more interested than you were in the past in activities in the district-wide, and not just sort of the things going on at your own school, but interested in a more broad view, RPSF really is a great organization and provides a great lens to many of the different schools and an opportunity to see the projects that are going on other places. So it's a great place to get plugged in for those that are inclined that way. But thank you for the presentation and great projects all around. Thanks.
And for those who are interested and remember the haunted hallways and the other stuff we did, we do want to bring that back this year. Unfortunately, it takes a lot of volunteers, and at this point, we have zero. So we will be putting some notes out there. That would be a big one. We'd love to see it come back because it was also a huge fundraiser for us. So, thank you very much.
Our next item is 4.1, Rochester Public School Foundation Grant Recipients. Our next item is 4.2, recognitions, educational support professionals, paraprofessional recognition week. Director Workman.
Governor Walz has proclaimed the week of January 21 through 27, 2024, as Paraprofessional Recognition Week. Here in RPS, these valued staff are called educational support professionals or ESPs. ESPs work in a variety of essential positions and areas, including the classroom, providing direct pupil support with special education students and services, transportation on buses and vans, in school-age childcare, the lunchroom, playground and hallways, and in our media centers. We are grateful for all the contributions they make to our students' experiences and successes every day and join with Governor Walz in his proclamation. Whereas Minnesota is home to more than 20,000 paraprofessionals who provide multiple services in our schools, paraprofessionals offer support throughout the classroom that contributes to the success of students and their teachers. And whereas the support and services provided by paraprofessionals are integral to student achievement, paraprofessionals take on a wide range of responsibilities to meet the unique needs of the students in their care. Their dedication supports safe, effective, and engaging learning environments throughout Minnesota. And whereas Minnesota's Department of Education is committed to excellence in education and recognizes the important role that paraprofessionals play in ensuring success in our schools, and whereas Minnesota celebrates the essential contributions of paraprofessionals during Paraprofessional Recognition Week. Congratulations to all of our Rochester education support professionals.
Do we by chance have any ESPs in the room? And would you be willing to stand if you're here? No ESPs tonight. All right. Our next item is 4.3, Board Member Committee Updates. Do we have any updates on board members? Dr. Marvin?
Yes, we are fortunate to have Lilly here at Lilly. If you'd come up and sit at this table and speak into one of the microphones. She is a representative of the Student School Board from Mayo High School, and she has the report.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Lilly Laterno, and I'm a freshman at Mayo High School. I'm a member of Mayo Student School Board, here to report on what's been going on at Mayo and at Student School Board as of late. First, I'll provide some important points from our most recent meeting on January 17. Our meetings are held here in the Edison Building with the Student School Boards of all three high schools. A critical question we reviewed in collaboration with them is this: Should high school students be allowed to go to the high school they want to attend, as long as they can transport themselves independently? Well, initially, this may seem enticing. The Mayo Student School Board found that there were too many risks of inequity, namely socioeconomic divide. This could mean the end of boundary changes and free choice for many, with just one problem: many, not all. Students that own their own vehicles are generally more affluent than those who do not. If only these students can choose their high school, this could result in one or two high schools containing the majority of students with a high socioeconomic status, causing a divide that does not encourage diversity. On a lighter note, another topic we discussed was Cradle to Career, a system of resilience networks that helps students of all ages to set and achieve goals. During the meeting, we discussed the social-emotional health of students, the good, the bad, and what can be done. This spring, Student School Board is planning to collaborate with Cradle to Career to hold a student forum. We look forward to diving even deeper into this highly important subject then. One part of Mayo that we are especially proud of is our TOPS Room. T-O-P-S, TOPS stands for Teens Offering Peer Support. The TOPS Room is a place students can go if they need a break, for any reason, from being overwhelmed to needing help with mental health issues. Inside are trained students or peer supporters there to help students that need it, and Amanda, our student resiliency specialist. Peer support is one of the most important parts of the TOPS Room because sometimes, students can understand their peers in a way adults cannot. It is for this reason that we are making an effort to expand the concept of peer support from Mayo to the other high schools. At one of our recent Student School Board meetings, Mayo's Student School Board partnered with peer supporters from the TOPS Room to present and explain peer support to the other high schools. With a little hope and a lot of work, we expect there to be resources like TOPS in the other high schools in the future. Not only has Mayo been working to make changes through Student School Board, but in our own school as well. Every December, Mayo holds its annual month-long fundraiser called Give One for All, or as we call it, GOFA. We are delighted to report that this year, we hit our record of $68,339.36, higher than ever before. All funds have been donated to the Dorothy Day Hospitality House and the Rochester Women's Shelter. But Mayo isn't the only high school hitting fundraising records. Century High School also held a fundraiser for Bear Creek Services and Paws &amp; Claws, raising a total of $35,375, beating their record as well. The charity efforts of these high schools is one of the many examples of the contribution that Rochester Public Schools High Schools have to the Rochester community, and they've only been increasing. I and the rest of the Mayo Student School Board look forward with optimism and excitement to the future of RPS.
Thank you. And Lilly, when I'm no longer the advisor, you can just step right in because...
Okay.
Board members, any other committee reports? I'll give you some fair warning. At our next regular meeting, I'll be asking you to report on a workshop that you attended at MSBA that you wanted to share information or materials about, but I wanted to give you a little advance notice that we'll do that at our next meeting. Items 5.1 through 5.18 are our consent agenda. Would any board member like any item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Both approval. Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved.
Madam Chair, could I just, can we bring up, we have a picture that is actually indicative of an action you just took, because you've just appointed Dana DeWitt as the principal at Jefferson, where she was interim. And when we went to hold a listening session with the staff to find out how things were going, which we also did with parents and others, they all unveiled this DeWitt Fan Club t-shirts. And the number of emails that I got from that amazing staff about how excited they are about Dana's leadership was really encouraging. As board members will remember, Heather Claveter is her previous principal there, but when she came to join us in the central administration as Director of Academics for Elementary, we had an opening. Dana stepped in ably and quickly and has done such a fabulous job that I was pleased to recommend, and I'm pleased that you just approved Dana as our new lead principal at Jefferson. But I wanted to share that visual because it's a cool testament to how those educators feel about their new leader.
That's great. And congratulations to Jefferson and to Principal DeWitts. All right. Our next item is item 6.1. It's an action item, attendance options redesign. But before I introduce the resolution, Superintendent Pecal has some updates and some remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. This has been a long journey that is now coming to a point of action tonight. As board members know, a central goal of this initiative has been to change the transportation system to implement new start times, but it's been about more than that. It's been about reducing some very long bus routes that we've had students taking, including students who used to walk to school, who for the last couple of years have been taking those long bus rides. It's about increasing the efficiency of how we use our buildings. And it's also, though we haven't talked as much about it, expanding space for some programs: Montessori, early childhood education, our school-age childcare, the newcomers program, our creating a middle school, ALC. The timelines for this initiative have been tight, but they haven't been tight by choice. They've been tight by necessity. First, the narrow failure of the referendum in November created a financial imperative that would have contributed to a much larger deficit than the one that we face and must close this spring, had Mayo Clinic not stepped in with an extraordinary investment in our kids. Similarly, after you approved the adoption of new start times last June, we went into redesign mode, looking at how we could redesign our transportation system, we hoped, without reducing any level of transportation service. That proved to be impossible to do, and as board members and many others will remember, we initially had proposed to have our district-wide option schools merge with schools that have geographic attendance areas, and we have since adopted the regional structure that is before you tonight. The reason I mention the timelines is to acknowledge that this process has been one that I still believe we have conducted with integrity. We've listened, we've learned, we've changed the proposal dramatically, but it has not been optimal. It has not had the kind of opportunities for individual dialogue, for conversation, that we might have, I certainly would have wanted. I do believe we got the messages, and it came through, but it was not indicative of the kind of proactive engagement that I would hope to have when we're making change in a system as large and complex as ours. But I think we have a good proposal before us, and as both of the public commenters tonight highlighted, we've got a lot of work to do ahead of us, and that the devil is often in the details of implementation, whatever decision you all choose to make individually and collectively in a moment. So, a few questions have come up since our study session last week, and I want to just touch on them very briefly. One of them, will next year's fifth-grade students who live in the Longfellow attendance area, who've been bused to Franklin, be able to stay at Franklin for their last year? The question from a community member was about fifth grade. To finish elementary school, the answer would be yes, though they would need to self-transport. That's true across this entire redesign. If a student is being impacted in their ability to continue in a school and transportation service is shifting and their family can self-transport, they would be able to complete their time at that school. So, that was one question that came in. Another question, it's pretty in the weeds, but it's certainly important for some of our families who attend the district-wide option schools. What will the drop-off points be where they could drop their students within the region and then receive transportation to the school? And so, this will all be posted pending the decisions that you make later tonight. But for Lincoln K through eight, families could drop their students at Falwell, Franklin, Jefferson, Longfellow, Pinewood, or Riverside. For Washington, families could drop their students at Bishop, Churchill, Elton Hills, Hoover, Sunset Terrace. For Longfellow, they could drop their students at Franklin, Pinewood, or Riverside. For Montessori in the Franklin Building, students could be dropped at Longfellow, Pinewood, or Riverside. And for the Spanish immersion program, which we've proposed, would move to Riverside, they could drop at Franklin, Jefferson, Longfellow, Pinewood, or Riverside. In addition to those school-based drop-off points, families will be able to identify an address within the region, a friend, a family member, a daycare, where they also would choose to drop their students off. Now, some families will choose to, or of necessity will need to drive their student all the way to the school if they choose to self-transport, but we're trying to mitigate the impact of the reduction in transportation service for those families as much as we can while reducing those long routes that would make it impossible to move to our new start times. Another question, what are the cost savings in what we've called version two of the redesign compared to version one? Another way to think of that is pre-Mayo Clinic investment versus post-Mayo Clinic investment. So, version two, we're estimating staff savings of $339,791. That's from some of the program consolidations, where they would not be requiring two of the same positions. We're confident that all people in RPS who want to remain with RPS, who might be impacted, would have multiple jobs to choose from, as has been the case with almost all of our staff reductions since I've been here. And then, transportation savings in version two, or the version that you are considering tonight, $521,160. So, total estimated savings of $860,951, which would give us a start on reducing the approximately additional $2.5 million that we need to reduce for the 2024, 2025 school year through the budget process. So, that $800,000 compares to estimated savings of $3,021,470. Twenty-seven dollars in the first version of the redesign, that constituted $1,963,987 in savings from staff reductions and $1,057,440 in transportation savings. So, to sum up, $3 million in the first round and about $860,000 in the second. The savings in version two are eliminating two routes that currently take students who live in the Longfellow attendance area to Franklin. We are budgeting for an additional route, all students who are living in the Pinewood attendance area, who, if you approve this, would be going to the building currently occupied by Longfellow, all would receive transportation. And this was a question for many families. We believe there are major improvements that, further improvements that can be made along Marion Road, and we're beginning that work internally and with the city. And we know kids are walking there, and we've had no instances, but it's a relatively long route and a complex route. So, we're budgeting for a new bus route there. We actually think there's 49 students, and we think they will all fit on existing routes, but we're including that as a cost. And then, we're cutting five routes due to the district-wide options, long routes. Sometimes, it's difficult to remember that it's not the short bus routes that kill us with start times, it's the long ones. We could do a lot of short routes and still meet the imperative of the new start times, it's the long turnarounds that are the problem. So, we've already talked about the students who live in the Pinewood attendance area getting over to the Longfellow building. If that's approved, they would receive transportation. Another question, given that I've recommended, changed the recommendation that if approved, Spanish immersion would move into the Riverside building at the K-5 level next year, but we would defer the middle school move to give us more time to plan, to plan a middle school curriculum and a true immersion curriculum. So, the students who currently attend school at Willow Creek would continue to attend Willow Creek at the middle school level. What about their transportation? If they live in the Willow Creek, Mayo transportation area, they would receive transportation to Willow Creek. If they do not, they would need to self-transport, as would all of the families impacted by that necessary reduction in transportation routes for the district-wide option schools. So, the final point I want to make is actually just to make a point. I know Dr. Marvin has said that Rochester Public Schools has been working on start times for, I believe you've said, decades. And I think Director Workman joked that you thought it might be done by the time your son got through with school, and he's...
Into first, yeah, right, when he was in first grade, by the time he hit ninth grade, and he just turned 40.
He turned 40.
So, yeah, it's been a while.
The challenge of getting start times right, and we did have a very, I heard the commenter tonight about the challenge of earlier start times in school-age childcare. We get it. We also have got a workforce challenge that we are really going to lean into, and I'm grateful for Amy Ick's leadership already on that score. In a 218-square-mile school district that is configured the way ours is, this start times has been the Rubik's Cube, or the albatross around our neck, or whatever we want to say. And before I got to Rochester, I think this board did something courageous, which was to move the start times where it made educational sense for our secondary students. And in the work we did with the University of Minnesota, we heard resoundingly that that was a good decision. But board members have also told me that when you made that decision, and I know not all were on the board, there was not an awareness, nor did administration make a recommendation on the impact on young children and the fact that having school at 9:35, now 9:25, squandered prime learning time for our youngest learners. And so, I think the vote tonight, while there's many other aspects in it, it really is a time to get start times right. And then, another commenter was saying, we need some stability. I agree. And then, to stick to them for an extended period of time. So, our elementary schools would start at 7:55 with five minutes, depending on how the routes are finally designed, starting at 7:55 and ending at 2:15 p.m. The middle schools at 8:35, ending at 3:15, and high school, starting at 8:50, ending at 3:30. Phoenix Academy Rail, our middle school, ALC, would start at 8:20 and end at 2:20. Our preschool morning program would end at 8:15, start at 8:15 and end at 10:45, and our preschool afternoon program would start at 2:15 and end at 2:45. You've already approved those times, so I don't raise those because those are on the table tonight, but in order for us to implement those times, we have to make some of the most difficult changes that are part of this package tonight. And many of the other changes, like expanding SAC, are intended to mitigate the difficult aspects of this change because we know it will require adjustment on the part of both of, some of our families and our educators. But if those times do change, while I know we will hit some bumps in the road and things between now and next fall, lessons will be learned, I am confident that as we have got our elementary students starting school at about 8:00 a.m. and our high school students not starting at the crack of dawn, next fall, it will have tremendous benefits for student learning, for school culture, and for the general tenor of what's happening in our schools. And so, I wanted to bring us back to that start time piece because I know there's many other things on your minds as you consider this proposal. So, thank you for the chance to walk through those questions and summarize that point.
And for those of you who are furtively taking notes, the details on the questions that the superintendent presented are available in our agenda item under Board Questions and Answers tonight, so if you're looking for that detail. Answers tonight, so if you're looking for that detail.
So, while this is an action item tonight, before I read the resolution for discussion, I'll ask board members for any additional questions for the superintendent or the cabinet, or any questions regarding the resolution for discussion. Dr. Marvin?
Just for clarification, there are some recommendations here specifically about Mayo students, Sunset Terrace and Gibbs students, Dakota and John Adams, and then Mayo students who've been going to Century. Will students who have been at one of those schools previously, and now under the proposal would attend a different one, will they be able to stay at the school they began at if they can provide their own transportation, or if they're within that attendance area?
Yes, Dr. Marvin, they would. The vast majority, in the case of the Mayo students, even though we officially moved them to Century, what I hear from Principal Priggy and what we also see in the data is most of them didn't go, and they've been getting themselves to Mayo anyway through exception to attendance. And so, that's one in which we, there were some that are doing it. So should they want to continue staying at Century, yes, they could do it, they would need to self-transport.
Thank you. Dr. Cook?
One of the items in the Board Questions and Answers also related to exception to attendance, and it sounded like, kind of to follow up on the discussion we had at the study session last week, I think it was from our Chief of Schools, indicated that the exception to attendance would not be continued next year. Is that, I just wanted to clarify whether, if that's not going to be the case, then am I understanding correctly that to the extent a family had a rationale for attending a non-attendance area school that was recognized under exception to attendance, instead, they would be going through the capacity-based lottery system through SchoolMint? Is that the intention now, or the planned implementation?
Yeah, Dr. Cook, I appreciate that question. I didn't cover that in my remarks because it really is one of implementation, but I'm glad you asked it. So for high schools, it will continue to exist. I think we may find a different name. For some, we've gotten some feedback on the term exception to attendance, it's neither particularly clear nor... So high schools, as you know, based on feedback we received, which we also heard from Mayo students tonight, we have pulled back from the proposal that you could attend any high school. So, the self-transport option in the proposal before you tonight would only be middle and elementary schools. So we will still have an option for a high school student who has a need, maybe it is educational, maybe it is social-emotional, maybe it is some other. We know it's not for athletics because you can't, you know, pick your team to go. We still would have a provision for a high school student to attend a different high school, and we'll have criteria. For middle schools and elementary schools, essentially what we're proposing is that we will no longer need that process because families will be able to self-transport in an instance in which there is a circumstance where there's a compelling educational or other need for a student to attend a different middle or elementary school. And if the middle school or elementary school was closed based to the self-transport option, we would prioritize that unique need. And so, we see much less need for it at elementary, in middle school, but we would still have a way to serve what we predict would be a pretty small number of families if they had a unique circumstance where they needed to go. We've had a few instances since I've been here where a student was involved in some type of incident, usually with another student, and the family felt, and we agreed, that continuing to maintain, be enrolled in their current school didn't give them a chance at a fresh start, which they would benefit from in terms of peer group and things like that. And so, were there a situation like that, and was a middle school or elementary school full, I think we would see that as a separate case. But we're thinking in most cases, there will be space for precisely that reason, for people to choose. And what has been a process that people in the know have used in Rochester for decades will now be widely publicized and easy to access over the, using the new software that we'll be launching after this decision, which, as you mentioned, is called SchoolMint.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Dr. Barlow?
A couple of questions. First, dealing with the Mayo gift. In essence, what that did, well, rather than make a statement, I'll ask the question. Did the Mayo gift basically buy us a year? Okay? And then secondly, as it relates to the, what will be the motion before us, school start and end times and the increase of the efficiency of our transportation system really are the, we definitely have to get those things done for school year '24, '25. Then the remaining portion of that question is, the remaining items aren't necessarily time-sensitive to our budgetary issues, though at some point, for school year '24, '25, at some point in time, and you've answered that portion of the question, I don't want to complicate it by these stringers, but, so, final point of clarification as it relates to the referendum that you have indicated you will, with the board's approval, present. That is to assist us primarily school year '25, '26, and out. Okay? So the gift itself was not a solution to our fiscal problems that we're going to be faced with for a number of years. I only reiterate that because some members of the public have thought that, well, with the providing of the gift, none of these things should be necessary. And just to clarify again, is that a true or not true, is that a true or inaccurate statement?
It's entirely accurate, and I think it's, I'm very glad you bring it up, Dr. Barlow. On paper, which doesn't mean it's false, our deficit for next year would be $19.5 million. So, 10 million of that is the result of what we had been hoping would be a $10.1 million referendum, which narrowly failed. Mayo Clinic stepping in has allowed us to avoid two things, raising class sizes and closing schools. Because even though the first version of the redesign would have saved 3 million, we still had to get to the 10 million. That meant $7 million of more cuts that we now do not have to make. There is no way, I know everybody thinks there's people down here in this building drinking coffee who could be cut, there is no way you'd get to 7 million without cutting at the classroom level. That's where people are. So the Mayo gift forestalled that 10 million. 7 million, this board has approved us to dip into our budget reserves to take over healthcare for our employees, because the premium increases were killing them. And that is an extraordinary commitment. Post-Bulletin has done recent reporting on the districts surrounding Rochester with just, I mean, teachers and staff saying, I'm going to be owing my district money for my healthcare and not making, so we're going to deficit spend to cover that healthcare, which is a prudent thing to do in the transformation, but we're going to have to pay for it down the road. And then that leaves 2.5 million that we need to close through efficiencies that I'll be recommending to you as part of the process. And you're correct, Dr. Barlow, that the critical time-sensitive piece of the components of the proposal is the transportation piece regarding the district-wide option schools, which if no action is taken, would keep us from implementing the new start times. The others, I think, in different ways, both mitigate some of the difficulty of that and enhance some programming options, but you're correct, should you choose to do that, those things could be deferred. Though as we've heard tonight too, people are kind of eager for stability, and let's just pick a strategy and stick to it for a number of years and not have this level of change every year.
Thank you.
Any other comments, board members, before I read the resolution? Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby direct the superintendent to implement the following components of version three of the attendance options redesign. Move Pinewood Elementary into the building currently occupied by Longfellow Elementary, and operate Longfellow and Pinewood as two schools within the same building, one of which will operate on the 4515 calendar and one of which will operate on the traditional calendar. Move the Spanish immersion program from its current location at Gage Elementary and Willow Creek Middle School into the building currently operated by Riverside Elementary. This move will be implemented in two phases. The K-5 program will move to the Riverside building for the 2024, 2025 school year, and the middle school program will move to Riverside for the 2025, 2026 school year. Make the following changes to the school district's current attendance boundaries. A neighborhood where students used to walk to John Adams but have been bused to Dakota for the past two school years will return to the John Adams Walk Zone. A neighborhood where students used to walk to Mayo High School but have been bused to Century High School will return to the Mayo High School Walk Zone. A neighborhood and developing area west of Hy-Vee on West Circle Drive that is currently shared by Sunset Terrace and Gibbs will be assigned to the Sunset Terrace Elementary School. Revise the level of transportation service provided to current district-wide option schools, DWO's, to provide them with transportation within regions of the school district rather than from any location within the school district boundaries. Five, revise the school attendance system to enable families who do not live in the attendance area of an elementary school or middle school that is not a district-wide option school to enroll their student in the school if all of the spaces at the school are not filled by students who live in the attendance area and the family can provide transportation to and from the school. Six, expand the Montessori program located within Franklin Elementary to fill the spaces that will no longer be occupied by approximately 120 students who live in the Longfellow attendance area and currently receive transportation to Franklin Elementary because their families have indicated they do not want to send their student to a school that uses the 4515 calendar. Seven, expand the newcomers program for students who are new to the country by offering the program at Gage and Franklin Elementary Schools, Kellogg and Willow Creek Middle Schools, and Century, John Marshall, and Mayo High Schools. Eight, expand the school-age childcare SAC program to provide more students and families with high-quality care before and after school. Nine, create a middle school alternative learning center, ALC, for students who perform substantially below grade level, have experienced physical or emotional abuse, struggle with mental health concerns, are homeless, or have recently been in transition from homelessness, or have withdrawn from school or are chronically truant. Do I have a motion to approve? Move approval. Second. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Dr. Marvin?
I guess just a statement mainly. We've heard from a number of parents from Pinewood in particular, wonderful people who adore their school, who love the smallness, the community, and we take that really seriously. We understand how you feel. Most of us are parents. And the good news is, my kids have all grown up in Rochester, their kids are all being, with one exception, all being raised in Rochester. They adore their schools too. Pinewood is special. And I'm hoping that if this motion is approved, and if Pinewood does share a school with Longfellow, that we as a district, that Pinewood is a school, can learn the lessons from the parents and the students who moved to a different building when Longfellow was built, when Harriet Bishop was built recently, and kids moved into a different building, when Overland was built, and kids from different places moved into a new building. What did the staff do? What did the parents do? What did the community do to welcome these kids and make sure that those students, that those staffs and their families felt that same kind of community, that same kind of welcome that they had felt at the building that they were in before? I get it, that community is more than a building. The building's important. But, you know, I went through a time when students from both John Marshall and Mayo, the ninth graders, were attending Friddell together for half the day because there wasn't room for them at their buildings. And there were maybe three of the best years in this district. Kids who didn't know each other were coming together in a place that was built, was built as a furniture store, but then converted to be a middle school center. And, well, before that was after the furniture store, it was the University of Minnesota. It wasn't designed for high school, but they made it work, and it was a great situation. And I'm confident that if this passes, the Pinewood families and their students will find a new home in a different building.
I had the pleasure of being a part of a military family and attended four different elementary schools, two different, they're called junior high schools at that time. And, but that was part of, if you will, the makeup of being a military family. You knew that, you expected that, it was just part of being associated with military. Rochester Public Schools has the capacity and has successfully over the years provided stability within our schools, and with few exceptions, we haven't closed schools or moved programs. I mean, the Edison Building, from what I understand, previously was a school, if I'm not mistaken, and were the Boys and Girls Club previously a school. Anyway, that being said, I'm not sure, especially in light of community input, we're hearing even tonight, parents emphasizing their desire for partnership. And time provides opportunity for developing meaningful partnerships. Surveys in and of themselves do not do that, or if you will, convening meetings, but actually taking time. Now, how much time is required to build items such as trust and support? I think however much time is required to have community confidence in not only its elected officials, the seven of us, but the superintendent as well. And so I purposely inquired as to what two things definitely needed to occur tonight, what two things the board actually needed to approve tonight. And I realize that the plan includes some nine different items, of which there probably are five, actually four, that I could see moving forward tonight, and there are five that I would, not necessarily, that I'm not in support of, because they would either result in a relocation of programs and/or schools into other schools. And so I just encourage my fellow board members to keep in mind that really, there's only two things we need to do, as it relates to, tonight that is, two things we actually need to do in terms of the redesign, and that is to affirm and approve the need to have our school start and end times in place and achieving the efficiencies of our transportation system. And so I encourage you to consider that prior to the casting of your vote.
To Dr. Barlow?
To piggyback off of a comment you made about trust, I think it's an interesting comment, because trust isn't just built because of the passage of time. It's built when there are opportunities available, and this is an opportunity for us as a district to maintain that trust, or to build additional trust that may have been lost with our community. And I'll just say that I feel confident in the superintendent and the cabinet and everyone else who participated in creating the original version and the updated version and the update to the updated version of this plan, that not just after the gift from Mayo, but from the feedback from our community that went into the development of this plan. And I feel confident that with this new plan for even the parts of it that are not yet perfected, and that still may create uncomfortable change for some of our families, I feel confident that we'll support our families and we'll either respond, if with not a hard and fast solution, but with influence, as one of our speakers suggested, with other types of support, and that we'll continue to use this as the model for how we crack that code in communicating with the community so that we can hear them. Because I feel like this process changed the way that... Because I feel like this process changed the way that we receive information from the community. You know, there have been a number of other things since I've been on the board where people have sent us floods of emails and we get hundreds and hundreds and hundreds. And this felt so different because it felt like the community said, wait a second, we've been asleep at the wheel maybe, and I think a lot of it was because there was disconnect from lack of trust or perceived lack of transparency in the past, that now they showed up to give us all of their feedback. And those of you who are actively working on the plan heard that feedback and implemented it as much as possible. And we've got lots of information and Q and As and through our regular board meetings and our study sessions that reflect that we are listening. And I think there's still more that we could do to improve the way, I guess, the two-way communication. And I think that this is a really good start to reestablishing that trust and also that the gift is just that, it's a gift, and it only gets us through this year. And now we need all of you who have that fire in your belly to work with us to ensure that we are, we're on the path to financial stability in the future and that this isn't something that comes up for us again, that we are making these decisions for multiple generations out, for your grandchildren's grandchildren that are eventually going to go to school through Rochester Public Schools. So thank you to everybody who worked on this for all your hard work, and thank you so much to the community for all of you who had the courage to stand up and tell us, yes, the good stuff and the stuff that didn't work for you and why. You're making us a better district because of your voice. Thank you.
Dr. McLaughlin.
I just want to add to Dr. Garcia's comments. I agree with the issues of trust and that I think the district has made a lot of progress while she and I have been on the board for the same term, the transitions that have gone on with the district during that time. And I really want to thank Dr. Bacall for making this initiative and communicating about it to the community in a way that I think is, as Dr. Garcia said, that people are understanding now that they need to be involved in their schools and their children's schools and their families need to be involved in their schools. But I also want to bring up the point that I think Dr. Bacall, one of the things that I give him credit for is not only his work and the work of his administration here in this building, but also putting the staff in place at each school, that I trust him to have made those decisions about the staff, both the principals and the administrators and the educators in those schools, that we can trust those people to do right by our children. So it's really great to see that and also to finally see the start times where they need to be. And also reflecting on our last board meeting where we talked about basically the guiding principles of the board, that as a board member, we need to look at what's best for all students and what's best for the district's long-term financial health. And I think the decision that's before us today will accomplish all of those things together. So thank you.
Director Cook.
Yeah, I wanted to thank the administration for putting together a cost estimate of the revised proposal and what that would equate to because my mind has very much been, with great concern, been on the need to still identify $2.5 million in proposed reductions, which I have every confidence the superintendent and his team will be able to provide to the board. But to put that in context, or the context that I am thinking of, we have set aside $900,000 to update our reading curriculum next year. $2.5 million is a lot. Reading is an incredibly urgent need. We are simultaneously transforming, in a robust systemic way, the way that our educators understand how to provide reading instruction. And that extensive professional development, while it is partially funded by the state, I'm under no illusion that that isn't also a significant expense for the district. There are updates in the science curriculum that are needed. This goes way beyond just the outstanding labor negotiations. There are educationally important needs. And my concern with this proposal, and I plan to support it at this stage, but my concern is that the $3 million that was identified in the initial proposal, we're not going to be able to go back as we're looking at the $2.5 million that's going to be proposed, I guess, if this were to approve, we're $800,000 down the road on that, I expect. But while there was significant disruption, and I certainly don't need any education on the value of stability for kids, I've got four of them attending RPS. None of those proposals in the initial version affected classroom teachers and affected our ability to provide instructional environments at the class-sized targets that the board has already identified. So, you know, the problem with deferring a decision is that that becomes a decision and it just propagates the potential for uncertainty at a future chapter. So I, it's a package with complicated puts and takes on every single element, but overall, I think it has been well-formed, well-presented, and has incorporated significant community feedback. I also recognize the significant impact on the Longfellow and Pinewood communities. It is certainly not lost on me that while I hope in the fullness of time, the value of maintaining stability and peer and teacher relationships will be appreciated and ultimately will go to the benefit of those students, I absolutely recognize that there is a difference between a school that you can walk to with your neighbors and one that you are bused to in a much larger environment. It's absolutely different. But anyway, that's where my head's at. It's on the need for this district to transform reading instruction and have the resources available to implement those changes. So thank you.
Dr. Workman.
The big focus of the strategic plan is academics. And Director Cook, thank you for doing such a wonderful and succinct job of summarizing that. I appreciate it. In order not to affect that and still have our start times, we have to make some of these other kinds of changes. I'm not willing ever to dig into things like reading and say, well, I'm going to cut X number of dollars out of our reading program so that my kid doesn't have to ride the bus. And as a school board member, as school board members, we are all responsible for approximately 17,600 students. And I think by virtue of the substance and the number of the emails that we have received with this second proposal, I haven't heard from the other 17,580 parents of those students in response to this plan. It's going to mean some change, but this is the world we live in. It's constantly changing. Our kids are going to have to prepare for jobs that don't exist. One of the focus points at the school board convention this last week was, what's the use of artificial intelligence? What are we doing, preparing our students to be able to have the computer science skills and understanding that they need in order to function in 2023 and beyond? You know, the days of chalkboards and chalk and the other ways that education was delivered a long time ago when I was a kid were fine for that time, but we're past that time. And I see this as a plan that will get us to where we absolutely have to be for the start times, which is critically important. Dr. Bacall touched on that in his remarks about the importance of an earlier start time for elementary kids because that's when they do best, and a later start time for secondary students because that's when they do best. And I'm really sorry that there are some people who are going to be negatively impacted by that and working with members of the community in some of these other areas. I'm confident we can overcome this. But those 17,600 students are the ones that we are all here ultimately responsible for. And it's really hard decisions. It's really hard decisions. Nobody, well, I don't know, I don't think anybody on this board ever thought that it was going to be easy to be a school board member, but I think this is one of the times when we really have to step forward and look at what's best for everybody without impacting our academic programs, without raising class sizes, while still maintaining the academics that we really need to go forward with so that our kids can be successful.
I have appreciated hearing from our parents. And a message that has resonated with me is the desire for stability and a little bit more certainty. And as a board member, I feel like that's been what I've been desiring since I, even before I joined the board, was some stability and certainty in the direction of this district, in the academic and the social-emotional needs, and meeting those needs of our students, having a plan, knowing we have the resources to do that plan. And I appreciate the superintendent and the work of the cabinet and administration who have helped us to develop the plan, point it out at the back of the room every time I can, and the same diligence that was used to develop this plan that targets not only some of our financial challenges, but some of the academic and social-emotional needs of our students related to their optimal learning times. If there's a silver lining in what is a difficult, I know my colleagues and I know when they say they've read your emails, they mean it. And when they say they've listened to your voices, they mean it. And when I hear the uncertainty of parents in how they're going to best address the needs of their students, it hurts because we've all been parents or cared for children. But the silver lining in this is your passion about your schools and your passion about your teachers and your passion about doing what's best for your kids. Because what was disappointing after the failure of the referendum in November is that we almost felt like the community didn't care about their schools. But it's clear that there are people in this community who care about the schools and want to do what's best for students. So I think what we have in this proposal is a number of compromises. And, but I think what we have going forward are people who are in great places with great leadership in buildings and staff in buildings and parents who are going to build school communities wherever you're at, whether it's the place you currently are or a place that you'll be moving. We have some financial progress towards finding budget reductions to contribute to the $2.5 million that we need to cut. $800,000 is a lot of money to find. If we don't find it through this proposal, I share Director Cook's concern, it's going to cut perhaps even deeper at the classroom level. And we have some longer-term efficiencies and growth opportunities in some of our programs. I'm excited to see how, for example, the Spanish immersion middle school program will develop closer to best practices and what a Spanish immersion middle school program should look like. I had never even thought about the fact that we were teaching our Spanish immersion students language arts in Spanish only, but they weren't developing language arts skills in English. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about how that's going to develop. The middle school ALC has to be mentioned because it's a real need of our middle school-age students to have that opportunity to learn in a place that might better serve their needs. And I know the superintendent has spent much of his time since he's been here partnering with community organizations. And I agree with the speaker tonight, it would be great to work as a community partnership to see what we can do, not necessarily to think of it as childcare, but think about after-school opportunities that might help fill that gap with the earlier release times. So sharing my colleague's words, we understand the difficulties that this will mean for a number of our parents, but we really believe in the opportunities that can grow out of this. And this board, as it has listened to you in the past, will continue to listen to you as this implementation happens. We already have items on the agenda scheduled for when we'll get reports and monitoring on how implementation is going. You're of course always welcome to continue to contact us. And it will give us a launching pad, as Dr. Garcia has said, towards thinking about how we can communicate with the community on a more regular basis in developing whatever comes next in proposals for the district. So hearing no other comments? All those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
The resolution passes. Board members, it's 10 to 7. Would you like to continue? Item 6.2 is approval of the 2024 school board meeting dates and annual school board calendar draft, A B C D for 2024. This is also an action item. Before I introduce the resolution, some background. While the agenda item simply has detailed information, the essence of this action is to approve the dates for our school board meetings for the remainder of 2024 and the first version of the A B C D that provides a draft of our agenda items for those meeting dates. As for our meeting dates, we're following a pattern of having two regular meetings and one study session each month, unless our meeting dates are restricted by holidays or election-related dates. Note that all meetings will have a start time of 5:30 p.m., except for the Truth and Taxation meeting on December 17th, which by statute can't begin before 6 p.m. And as for the A B C D, a reminder to the community that the A B C D should be read as a draft and can be changed at any time. School board agendas are no longer in draft format only after the agenda is approved by the board at each meeting. Board members will also see in the agenda item a document that organizes many of the agenda items by topic so that you can see many of the items we discussed at our planning meeting in last fall and where they fall on our calendar, and you can see the sequence of some of our meeting decision-making. And Ms. Sam and I are working on a way to perhaps make the items on the A B C D more accessible to the public in terms of if you're interested in budget items, how can you more quickly find when we're going to talk about the budget? And if you're interested in when we're talking about SROs next, how might you be able to find that without having to actually work through all 24 pages of the A B C D? So before I read the resolution, are there any comments on our meeting dates or questions on the A B C D?
Director McLaughlin.
I just wanted to comment just briefly. I'm really appreciative of the topic groups and I think that that's a great step in the right direction.
Okay.
I think that the only thing I would say is, board members, over the past year, we have sort of, in your deep dives, focused topics, divided site-level discussions from system-level discussions. And in some instances, that will continue in the year ahead, especially where you're getting updates on the new systems change work that is just getting underway this year. But in many, we're going to seek to combine the two so that you'll be getting the view from the school level or program level and the system level as we dig into deeper learning or multi-tiered systems of support. And so unlike last year where we kind of had skips or discs, in many of these issues, this year we'll be combining that system perspective with building-level participation as well. And that was something that I worked a lot with the chair and vice chair on. And then I would be, chair has already mentioned Ms. Sam, but it would be remiss if we didn't thank Lori for the insanely diligent and detailed work she does on this. There's not a lot of school districts that have a school board calendar at this level of detail approved 12 months in advance. And that is to the chair and vice chair's credit, but in particular, it's to Lori. So thank you.
All right, hearing no other comments, I'll read the resolution. Ask for a motion in a second.
Ask for a motion in a second, and we can vote on the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of ISD 535 approve the dates, times, and locations for school board meetings for 2024, and be it resolved that the School Board of ISD 535 approve the 2024 Annual Board Calendar Draft.
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The resolution has been approved. Our next agenda item is legislative priorities for the 2024 legislative session. This is also an action item. Before I read the resolution, any updates or comments from the legislative committee?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I guess the only thing that I would point out is I, I didn't get any feedback from my fellow board members about the draft that we presented at the study session last week. The only points that I would make is I want to make sure that the board is comfortable with platform item number five, which is a little bit of a future-looking activity for the legislative committee to look at. And then, the only other thing I noticed is we did not have that as part of the resolution. So maybe that's a decision the board needs to make, is whether we want to include number five in our resolution before the board today or not.
And, number five is?
The potential platform for 2024 and beyond is about advocating for the study of the student assessment strategy and recommendations for reform.
Anybody else have any comments on it? Would the legislative committee think about that last item as a working item, as opposed to something that we could, would necessarily include in the platform? If the board is, has consensus that that's something they want you to work on?
I think, I think we can keep it as a working item for now, because this is on the radar of a lot of other school districts, and including our professional associations, the Minnesota School Board Association, and AMSD, the Association of Metro School Districts. It's very much on their radar, so it's not like this would not receive plenty of attention. And I think it's, we've been waiting to see if the board was going to approve these resolutions before we start scheduling any of our meetings with our area legislators, and it's certainly something that we can mention, even though it's not officially a priority. If, if anybody else is not comfortable with that, please say something, like, right now.
And I guess I would just add to that, I think of items number one through four of the resolution as this year's decisions in the short term, and then number five is perhaps both a short-term and a long-term discussion, both with our legislators and with those organizations that Director Warburg discussed.
Director Cook?
So I, I would like to maybe add a bullet point, I guess, to the, the, and I apologize to the legislative committee, perhaps you were looking for feedback in, in writing on, on these priorities, which I did not provide, but I, I think it would be in the best interest of RPS and really districts statewide to eliminate the special education cross-subsidy. It was in multiple drafts that were considered in the last legislative cycle, and instead of eliminating the special education cross-subsidy, which was, essentially translates to the state reimburses the districts in Minnesota for the extent of special education, the cost of providing special education services beyond what they have federal or state funding for, to the tune of 6.43 percent, leaving a pretty significant gap. That is being updated gradually over the next three years to 50 percent, leaving still 50 percent of the special education cross-subsidy to be paid by individual school districts out of their general fund. I, I think that we should advocate for full funding of special education at the state level. So that would, and then, the, the one other item that I didn't think of and didn't mention at the study session, was I think, especially discussing the REED Act, there is still work to do at the higher education level to ensure that graduating teachers are adequately prepared to implement the standards that are called for in the REED Act, so that every district in Minnesota is not on a continuous cycle of providing foundational professional development for every single entering teacher that enters its workforce. And while there are ongoing debates about academic freedom and so on, and there's been a lot of pushback at the higher ed level, I think that it's warranted for the legislature to insist on more robust graduation standards at the higher ed level for graduating teachers in training programs.
Can I make a suggestion procedurally how we could do that? I think, and I agree with you, Director Cook, that those are definitely things that we should include in this legislative platform. I think we can still vote on the resolution as it's stated, but we could modify our platform as presented to the board today to include, excuse me, the, the first platform is further stabilizing the education funding system. We can add a number five to address the special education cross-subsidy, and then modify number two, the focus on policies and tools to transform and innovate schools, add another bullet point to address the issue related to making sure that our graduating teachers are fully trained in our implementation of the REED Act. Does anybody on the legislative committee disagree with that idea?
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
So what we'll be presenting our legislators with won't just be the four bullets in our resolution, but actually that background document that you're suggesting adding the two bullets to.
Correct. And not only just with our legislators, but also any opportunities that we have to discuss this with others as well.
Any other comments? All right, I'll read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 adopts the following legislative priorities for 2024. One, stabilize the education funding system and ensure taxpayer equity. Two, focus on policies and tools to transform and innovate schools. Three, address PTET funding. And four, update the funding formula for summer school and after-school student supports.
So moved?
Second. It has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution has been approved. Thank you, legislative committee. We're looking forward to hearing what work you're going to put us to, to activate the legislative agenda. Item seven point one is the annual board calendar that we've just approved. This is a good place to remind the community that the current version of the A B C D will always be available in this agenda item for every school board meeting, for your reference. Item eight point one, board questions and responses, as I mentioned before, the questions submitted by board members before the meeting, and the answers are available in this agenda item. Item eight point two, upcoming board meeting dates. On February 6th at 5:30, we'll have a special session of field, on field trip fees. Immediately following the special session will be a regular meeting. On February 13th at 5:30, there will be a study session. On February 20th at 5:30, there will be a regular meeting, and on March 19th at 5:30, there will be a regular meeting. The next item on the agenda is a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute's Section 13D dot O5 subdivision 3B, which allows the board to go into closed session pursuant to labor negotiation strategy. The closed session will be convened immediately following passage of the motion in the Edison Building main floor conference room. Pursuant to the law I have cited, will someone make a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The board moves into closed session at 7:02 p.m.
The board returned to the regular meeting at 7:48 PM. Clerk McLaughlin, will you please read the list of people present in the closed session?
It was Chair Nathan, Director Garcia, Andy Krogstad, Director Barlow, Treasurer Marvin, Ms. Sam, Carol Bakken, Vice Chair Workman, Clerk McLaughlin, Director Cook, and Superintendent Pecow.
Hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 7:50 PM.